Good morning. It's February 6, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. I'd like to call the order, call to order the meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Would a clerk please call the roll call?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Fedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Hitt.
Here. Okay, if you're, please, if you're able to stand, join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move into our citizens' forum input portion of the meeting, where citizens can speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on the agenda today. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? If you'll step forward, please state your name.
Teresa Swisher, 4853 East McReynolds Road. My question is, what is the process procedure for amending your provisions, your guidelines in planning and zoning in here? Do the, does the public have a chance to give input on what the amendments are going to say, what things are passed? How do we know what's in them before there's, before you guys pass them as law or rules?
All items that come before the Board of County Commissioners are posted publicly in advance. In addition with planning and zoning regulations, those go to the Planning Commission first before they come here, and those meetings are open and public as well. So, the public would always have an opportunity to address any proposed amendments to zoning regulations.
Okay. So, if I went into their website or your website, before the meeting, I should be able to see the proposed amendment?
If you go into the website.
Yeah.
The amendment that is there right now, yes.
Okay.
It is posted. It's like I told you before, Teresa, anytime that, you know, that a citizen has a problem with something, you know, that, you know, if we're, well, we'll take a few months ago back, you always have input. And, like you said, it's all posted in case you have any questions before it comes up for that agenda on that meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike Jensen, I'm from Gypson, Kansas. And I'm under the impression you guys are looking at doing some guidelines and things like on this battery deal. I want to go back to the last go-round, and it's very evident that certain entities of the administration of the county that are non-elected are for this, that in the point that they took and advised you guys not to act as county commissioners but to act as judges, we elect you guys as judges. The citizens of the county are the ones who are supposed to be in charge, not a few appointed officials. And they took very offense to the fact that they requested you guys to act as judges and not what we elected. They also took and tried to reverse the vote of the County Planning and Zoning Commission, and they went public with it. They took and put it on the news media. It was a concerned citizen walked in off the street, read the actual rules, and made them reverse that action. They didn't look into anything as far as what those things would do, produce. One of the things with those things is they were built to withstand a 2.0 earthquake. There's been earthquakes. There was one a few months ago, a 3.0, within three miles of that place. There's been earthquakes within a half a mile of that place. That totally disregarded anything to that for the safety. One of the citizens come up here and told you guys that there's hydrofluoric acid. It was one of the results of the fires. When I worked at Phillips Lighting, we used hydrofluoric acid in part of the process. That's a very horrible chemical. It would take in, we were told that if we spilt some on the concrete floor, that it would eat through that floor, it would eat through the floor of the basement, and it would go to the water system. And so, we had very special containment. There was only very few people were allowed to even handle it. The administration took and overlooked all the other health effects that would affect the citizens of the area, just because the administration don't live around it. They felt safe, so they didn't care about the citizens that lived around it. They didn't care about our water, they didn't care about our health, they didn't care if it caught on fire in the middle of the night and somebody got gassed over it. Another thing, the tax abatements, you know, they, when they ask you guys to act as judges, they're insinuating that there could be lawsuits. At the planning and zoning meeting on public record, they were asked if they would apply for tax abatements. And their response on public record was it'd be up to the county commissioners to deny a tax abatement. So, if they're threatening lawsuits for the vote, they're going to threaten them on this, on tax abatements also. This was a total lose-lose situation for this county. Evergy's publicly stated they did not have a lack of power, they had plenty of generating capacity. This thing was, would be no benefit to anybody in Evergy's whole system. So, there's other countries now that are banning these things, a lot of states. It was very easy to go online and find fires of these things all over the U.S., and people being told to evacuate and get out, this, that, and the other. Administration for the county could care less. They never looked and investigated a single thing. Quite honestly, we're very, a lot of citizens are very upset with the county administrator, administration's office, and we would strongly suggest you guys accept their resignation if they were so, to give their resignation. We hope you guys would accept it, or when their contract comes due, don't renew it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jensen, I'd like to address a couple of those. Number one, you know, I really don't feel that we were asked to be judges. I mean, you know.
It was.
I feel that.
Those were his words.
Okay, I feel that we were asked to be biased, I mean, you know, to take a look at the situation, weigh the situation both ways before we made a decision. I know that, that you folks know that I was very vocal out front, and it was to me to, you know, to be, to take a look at the situation. This is all still uncharted territory for us. We've never had anything in Saline County to do with, you know, with a lot of solar or with a lot of batteries or anything. So, we have asked the Planning Commission to take a look and see what new guidelines that needs to be taken a look at, what we need to look at as a, as a commission, and so we're better informed. In some ways, I think we were pretty blindsided by the whole, whole battery system. They gave a fantastic presentation. If we wouldn't have had the citizens to step forward, who knows which way it would have went. So, we are looking at that. I look at the administration, our county administrator, and the people we got. We look for their guidance. A lot of the guidance that was given, we got from them, and we try to weigh that any way we can. I really, I really think that we've got a really fine staff, and I really think that they try their doggone best to, you know, to research and come up with whatever, you know, answers is needed.
Okay, Joe, what research did they come up with? Did they show you guys anything about the fires? Did they show you anything about the hydrofluoric acid? Did they show you anything about the earthquakes?
Okay. Like I said, you know, like I said, Mike, we were in uncharted territory.
Agreed, but you said their research. They showed you none of that. The only thing they showed you, the only thing they pushed was this thing needs to come in. We want those tax dollars, we want those tax dollars. That's the only thing that they had blinders on. They didn't care about the health and the safety of the citizens out there. They only had blinders on for the tax dollars. And that entity publicly said that they were going to apply for a tax abatement. Whether they got it or not, I don't know. But they publicly said that.
Well, if you also remember, Mike, it never did come to the commission itself. It never went, it never went any farther than after the appeal to the, or never even made the appeal process to the commission. So, we really never had to weigh in or anything on that part there.
No, you didn't. But administration never researched anything. They just followed what somebody from Houston, Texas told them. That's all they followed. That's the only advice, the only things they give, is what Houston, Texas come in and threw at them. They, there was no concern about the citizens of this county.
Thank you for your input, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you said something that caught my ear, if I heard you correctly, and you said that we were asked to be biased. And I don't remember anyone ever coming to this commission asking us to be biased about something.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we will now move into the consent agenda.
Got another one?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm Ken Ritz from Salina. There are a couple of areas that I wanted to both check in and also make a few observations with the county. First off, on the matter of having a body that serves as the health board for the county, which, if my understanding is correct, the commissioners have, have, as commissioners, you've appointed yourselves as that, having that function as well. Is that, is that correct, that you don't have a separate body, which is, as I understand it, the rule in rural counties at least, to have a board that would be, especially with something like the pandemic coming up, that the result was, with it being the commissioners, that it was immediately politicized, and that was really an area that, that needed as much as possible to be very technically oriented and to be a separate group. That was an enormous responsibility, if we were going to do anything along the lines of what a number of other countries got into, especially New Zealand, which really stood out. I tuned in to their actual, actually, daily press conferences that they had, and it was the Prime Minister and the head of the, of the Health Agency that each day, once they got up and rolling with it, it was sometimes six or even seven days of the week, and, believe it or not, on my cellphone, it, I could tune in, and I did. By the end of the run, they, they had had 319 multimedia conferences, just, you know, press conference. And there was the Prime Minister or someone she had brought in from that side and on the Health Department side. And it was really, it was fascinating to see, because they, they, they got into the nitty-gritty and the whole organizational structure, all the acts that the parliament had been considering, taken. It was just, it was amazing. Now, how accurate it was, we certainly in this country have had so much that is, you know, where there are two sides and they, and they both can't be right, or maybe it's some, a little of this side and a little of the opposition. And it's also just been a really nasty, and I don't know if you folks were getting calls late at night and threats made and whatever, but that seemed to be very uncommon in New Although with the Maoris, that was a real stumbling block for their program, and they were very open about this, that Maoris being the indigenous people in this country, we've, we've had both indigenous and imported folks that had few, if any, rights, slavery on one side, and the treatment that American Indians received, which was not altogether evil, but introducing smallpox into a tribe, just simple genocide, and it was intended. And it was approved or accepted by lots of folks that they were dealing with subhumans. And this is, this is something that you really, if you're a halfway decent soul, I, I just, you know, that's, we really want to have only in our rearview mirror. It's not something that should be going on currently, whatever. And I think you fellows would agree with that 110%. Never should have happened, and we sure don't need a repeat of it. But anyhow, it would, I think it would behoove you, I had only a little interaction with the powers that be at Saline County Health Department. The administrators are familiar, quite familiar with this, because I, early on, saw that it appeared that transmission of the COVID virus was overwhelmingly as an aerosol, which made the whole masking side of things, put it in an entirely different light. That six-foot distancing, the better your, the larger your distance, the better your protection, but, but it wasn't droplets. And if the mask wasn't effective and didn't fit, well, then it was worthless. If it, if it was an effective match, mask, and, and fit well, I never got one that, or got it fitted to where my glasses didn't fog up. If your glasses fogged up, the mask wasn't working.
Okay, I think we've, I think we got the gist of what your, what the Health Department stuff.
That, if, if, and the administrator, I'm sure, will be glad to share details of a filtering system that was used around the U.S. I didn't see it in Salina. And what happened at the Health Department, that when he brought it over and left it with them, and I went back to pick it, see what they were doing and pick it up, and found out that, what the lady told me was that they checked around, she checked around, nobody knew anything about it. Well, the county administrator talked to someone there.
Okay.
And it was obvious when you looked at it what it was. So, so they just trashed it.
Okay.
So, so anyway, that, that's one area that, that I'd be interested to know, what you folks are up to. And something else that I've run into with the concern for fire, and I know very little about, what was it, five, six, eight years ago, in southwest Kansas, that entire counties seemed to burn. That linked to, and I'm sure you fellows have noticed, over the last five, 10, 15 years, how much pasture ground is, has just basically been left to go to rack and ruin, and is being turned into, it isn't for us.
Ken, I really hate to cut you off, you know, if you'd like to come back next week and talk again, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's reached the three minutes, I mean, you know, that, that we allow. So, I mean, like I said, I really hate to cut you off, but.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
I was, would be happy to hear, that's what I'm here, here for, I'm here to hear whether there's been any involvement of the commission as to, I'm puzzled as to why anyone would take perfectly good pasture and just let it become a, I guess, a good place to hide, if you're wandering through the county, they'd never find you, whole sections that, that.
Why don't I have staff look into that, and then we can get back to you on that? I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Norman Manos, Salina, these issues will end up in the U.S. Supreme Court. I take this magazine, and you guys ought to read this. It's about water rights, property rights, mineral rights. They're going back clear to 1906 Acts. So, you need to look back further than just 20 years or 50 years. These are ending up in the courts.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of the approval of the tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public foreign agenda, a public approval of payroll, approval of addendum of the ARPA Fund and memorandum of understanding of co-responders, approval of reappointments to the 28th Judicial Nominating Commission, service contract for physical therapy, Saline County Health Department and Home Health, Deanna Pruitt, PTA. And I believe we have a change in the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do need to amend the public forum agenda for today. We have one of the department heads who's unfortunately out sick, so we will move informational item one, the senior services update, to next week.
Okay, is there any other parts of the consent agenda that any of the commissioners would like to have removed?
I'd like some clarification, or just a quick clarification, if we could, on this nominating for the Supreme Court of Kansas, the non-lawyers. I don't remember ever discussing these. These two were already appointed in a previous term, is that right, Jamie?
Yes, their previous term, their term was up, and so I get a letter stating that, and then we're just looking, and both of them are interested to run again, so just looking to be reappointed, so.
And, and I'm looking at you, because your name's on this. These two people, Christine Ritter and Donald Merriman, have you checked with them, I assume, to make sure that they're willing to serve again?
Well, I spoke with Don, I believe administration has spoke with the other.
Correct.
And they serve, it says a four-year term, I think? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other items?
Mr. Chair, I approve the consent agenda presented with the amendment of informational item number one.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, passes 5-0, 4-0. All opposed, same sign, passes five zero, four zero. Okay, we'll move on to the action items.
Excuse me, HMEPG applications for 2024 with Michelle Wise, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning.
I am here on behalf of Seline County's Local Emergency Planning Committee to request the Chairman's signature on three applications to be submitted for FY24's grant applications. If you remember in the past, listed in the last five years that I've been here, we've applied for this grant at least four times. It's provided numerous amounts of equipment, training, and outreach opportunities for both city and county public safety since we've then branched out to law enforcement. So, we've continued on that track. One of the offerings for the grant, I would request a lithium battery training. This is a classroom setting, hands-on. It is for any lithium batteries that are transported via ground or air. It is the same training that Customs goes through. It is a four-hour course and it would be open to all first responders, including rural fire, Salina Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, Police Department, and even dispatch if they were curious and wanted to know. So, there are three offerings for that. I would like to spend, or send four more technicians to the International Hazmat Conference next June. And also purchase several simulators that would simulate radiological incidents essentially as our hazmat team for the regional north central area. We do a very good job of practicing chemical incidents, but it's very difficult, as you can imagine, to simulate a radiological incident. But we have been having more conversations about that. And it would just help some of the responders take the exercises a little bit more seriously if we could do that. The total cost for all three grants is just over 50,000. Signatures for applications are due today. However, I have had them submitted a week prior. So, as long as I have approval for the Chair's signature, I can go ahead and move forward with this. Award letters should be issued out in August and money would be released in October. Are there any questions?
So, all of these have got a 20% soft match to them?
Yes, and for all of them, they are going to be covered by first responder salary and benefits.
Michelle, I see that the Salina Fire Department is involved in two of these.
Yes.
Do they, do they have any money responsibility in this?
So, they are just soft matches. So, it'll be the salary and benefits for the hazmat technicians that'll participate in the training.
And that having been said, then there really is no, no monetary.
Not for us.
Cost to the Seline County. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
So, didn't ask it very correctly, but that's what, no reason to turn it down, in my opinion.
Okay, any more questions for staff?
Is the, getting the monies or this fund before in August or they paid out in October, is these classes done this summer or before these funds are allocated?
So, they, the class for the lithium battery training will be tentatively scheduled for March of '25.
Okay, these are.
Yes, next year planning, because we have 23 funds that we're spending this year.
Okay, thank you.
So, the 24 funds have already been allocated then?
23 funds.
23 funds, I mean, yeah, okay. Okay, any, we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, anybody from the public like may comment?
Again, we know these batteries are hazards and you're sending people to training. I've talked to the Fire Department over here, they won't even touch these batteries because they'll blow up in their face. So, we know they're dangerous. That kind of ties together what he said. And yet you're allowing them to come here. Do you know which way you're going? No, you don't.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to Commission for.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2024-20 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, that passes four zero. Move on next, the next item.
Election Physical Security Regulation Grant. By me, of course. So, the Secretary of State's office in October of 2023 announced that they were, had some HAVA, federal HAVA money that they were going to give us for, to support the enhancements and advancements of the, complying with the election security administrative regs that, you know, include physical security of, of our equipment, ourselves, the ballots, and the election offices. So, each county is tasked with procuring any approved upgrades and improvements. And the Secretary of State's office is offering reimbursement up to 90% for the law bill expenses. So, I applied for the grant in October. On October 20th, I got the reward letter January 11th for the amount of $130,945, which will break down to $117,850.50 coming from the Secretary of State's office. And with our portion being $13,094.50. So, the alternatives for action is approve and accept the grant funds as awarded or deny the grant funds and find additional funding sources for the required regulation upgrades. And obviously, my recommendation would be to approve this.
Okay, it says that the Seline County was responsible for covering $13,094.50. Is there already funds in the, in the budget for that? Because I noticed it says there is no budget impact for the recommended action.
So, I'll probably let Phil answer that better, just because he has the breakdown of the budget.
And so, there's not budgeted funds, but the Equipment Reserve Fund, which is a non-budget fund. We had previously put $50,000 aside in that fund for election equipment replacement. So, that is what we would propose to use for that 10% match.
Jamie, did you, in reading this, did, did you have to, your office have to apply for this grant?
Yeah, so all 105 counties had to apply and, and specify kind of what we're going to use it for. And then, and then the Secretary of State's office reviewed it.
And if you didn't apply for the grant, we would have been on the hook for this $130,000?
Yeah, we would, we still have to do the, obviously, the administration regulations we need to make sure we comply with. And so, to do that, yes, we would have had to come up with that money ourselves.
Well, I guess you'd be commended, you know, for, for applying for the grant. I mean, if you, if you let that go by, then we'd have had a much larger responsibility here for the county. So, thanks for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions? Anybody from the public got any comment? If not, I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA 2024-21 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, that passes four zero. Makes us to the next item.
Creation of new Budget Department with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So, as the Commission is aware, we are doing a lot of activity with facilities and moving folks around. And so, we started trying to figure out where we're funding things. We have obviously moved some folks over to 229 North 9th and added some money to the budgets for those departments that are over there to try and maintain that facility. With the sheriff moving out, you've approved some ARPA funding for utilities at the old sheriff's office. We also took an opportunity to rent a facility at 203 North 10th. And you approved some funding that had been previously in the budget for that cost. And so, we've got these sort of little dribs and drabs around the budget. And we started looking at that and thinking, gosh, it would make it so much easier if all of that was in one place where we could see it and then we could specify it by what facility it was going to. So, staff set up a new budget, Department 27, to cover that facility planning and maintenance type activities and then set up sub-departments for the different facilities within that. The action requested of the Commission today is authorization to move the money that you previously budgeted into that new Department 27 in order to actually have some money there. So, then we could start charging things to that. So, that's the request and I'd be happy to answer questions about that.
The reuse of the former sheriff's office for the court services, is, is that a done deal?
That's an interesting question, Commissioner. So, they are over there, they have moved over there. There are some challenges with that building. And so, that may not be final. And I've alerted the Court Administrator and the Chief CSO to that. We are trying to come up with a picture of what that involves. But they are over there for right now. Again, they had been working from their houses for about a year since they moved off of the third floor. So, they're, they're there now. I believe they officially opened their doors to the public this week. And then we'll see what the future holds.
Well, hopefully, this isn't too far off the subject. But I, but the court services is what kind of gets my attention. The building that we have rented over on the west side of, of Memorial Hall, we're using it for storage space. And, and my point is that, I mean, that should be, hopefully, we can use that in the future for office space of some sort. Would that be a suitable size to handle court services rather than having to totally renovate the jail part of it?
Okay, so a couple of things there. One, we're not renovating the jail. We're not renovating, we're not renovating anything. They did do some painting and some patching of holes in the walls. But they're in the sheriff's office, not in the jail. The jail is completely vacant. Whether 203 North 10th would be an appropriate location for them, I think it has some size challenges. It doesn't have as many offices as, as what the sheriff, old sheriff's office has. So, it, I, I think it, they would be cramped in there if they were to go there. That might be the best option if, if the other things that we need to do to the sheriff's office prove to be too costly. But those are not what I would call renovations. Those are mechanical things that need to be.
But it's something that's in our, our vision sight, not in our rearview mirror type thing?
Correct.
So, okay, you have answered my question.
I remember sometime back here, there was something said that the FBI was interested in part of the.
Not the F, the K.
The KBI, I'm sorry. KBI was interested in part of that.
They, yes, we have continued to have conversations with them about being a potential renter in some of that space. They're sort of waiting on us to get some more information about costs. So, I'm, you know, we're working on that information right now and we'll continue those conversations.
Is that enough room over there to take care of both court services and the KBI if they decide to do that? Or?
Yeah, so the KBI was looking at being in a different part of the building. So, the, the old sheriff's office, so where the sheriff, the undersheriff, the records, all that was, that's in the 1962 portion, so facing 10th Street. There's the jail, like the actual cells. And then on the other side of the jail, there were jail administrative offices which were in a row facing Elm. And those were the offices that the KBI was potentially interested in. So, it would be not only not the same space as court services, it would be physically separated.
So, we are looking at possibility. Would be nice if we could tell the public that, hey, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, instead of letting this place sit empty and not use it for anything, to at least have a potential renter for over there taking part of it.
Right, absolutely. I mean, we, we asked the public, as you'll recall, about a year ago about preferences for reuse of the space. And the number one thing that people wanted to reuse the space for was a public safety facility. And so, we've got court services, which is probation officers in part of the facility. And then potentially, you know, KBI, which is law enforcement investigators in another portion of the space. Again, I would say neither one of those things are final yet. But we are trying to not only reuse the space, but reuse it in a way that honors the wishes of the public.
Okay.
Hopefully, you can give me a quick answer on this one, Phil. But of the jail space, the, the building space over there, what percentage is jail cells and what percentage is office and?
Oh.
Approximately.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's 80% cells and 20% offices, just sort of off the top of my head. I have to go calculate.
That helps me a lot because that means that the 80% of that building is going to cost a lot of money to renovate regardless of what we do, if we do something. Okay, thank you.
Quick question here, are, are we and have we, moving forward with a firm to the city and the county combined, looking at the spaces and what's moving forward with that issue versus us making decisions on what we're going to be doing before that even comes out? The results of all that?
Yes, so you're referring to the RFP that we have out right now. And so, county staff and city staff did tours last Thursday for potential people who might bid on that project. And so, they toured these spaces as well as several other buildings. And so, proposals will be coming back this spring. We're hoping to have a firm, you know, selected on board by early, you know, part of summer, get the study done so that when we have the 26 budget process next, next year, we'll have recommendations and we can start weaving those things in. So, I've been clear with both court services and the KBI that their potential use of space would be an 18 to 24-month thing. And then after that, it's not, you know, there's no guarantees after that because we're in the middle of this study.
Just another quick question, it really didn't pertain to that. But it's like, why is this study, and, and I know that you had the map of, of all these downtown facilities, why isn't it that we're looking at all the, the properties that the county and the city own? Because there might be some other areas that we could do something with and add to. I, I just wanted to ask that question.
No, that's a good question. So, I, I will say two, two things. One, the city, we're partnering with the city and they weren't interested in examining, you know, all of their fire stations and all their, you know, other facilities. They, they really wanted to concentrate on the things that were pain points for them, which is largely in the downtown corridor. Two, the more things that you have somebody study, the more costly it is. And so, this was in part an attempt to keep the scope of the project reasonable. So, certainly, the county has additional land that we could locate something on. One of the things that we've said to potential firms. One of the things that we've said to potential firms is, you may find, I mean, these are all these facilities we want you to study. You may end up finding that something doesn't fit in any of them. We want to know that too. Because that would be something that we could look at relocating out of the downtown core. But we think, you know, trying to reuse what we have is probably more cost efficient than trying to build something new on another piece of ground somewhere.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA 2024-16 as presented.
Second motion.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. It passes 4-0. That will bring us into the informational items.
Planning and zoning year-end update with Tim Hamilton, planning and zoning administrator.
Good morning. This is my update from last year, just kind of recapping. And we had a total of eight public hearings last year. As we had six conditional use permits considered, one transfer of development rights, and one clarification through a text amendment of the way the zoning regulations, how to implement this particular like aspect of the zoning code. And that was a clarification that was done as well. All cases, with the exception of the plus power case, as you know, who withdrew their application prior to going to appeal. All the other CUPs were passed. Under the building permits issued for last year, we're on par with, you know, what we did in 2022. We have a little bit more development going on last year. We had about 78 total permits compared to 72 back in 2022. Our plans for this year are to, we're working on filling the one position that was on the planning board vacated upon the passing of Kai Woodrich in September. In addition, staff is continuing to consult with the planning commission on making general text amendments to our zoning code that would be in compliance with the adopted comprehensive plan. I'm looking at probably the third quarter, having that completed. The, there will be a February planning commission meeting where we'll kind of start the ball rolling on looking at, you know, amendments, if any, to the zoning code regarding any alternative energy sources. You know, we already have wind energy provisions, but we're going to see if the planning commission wants to act on any other or recommend any other changes to include other forms of alternative energy. The budget update, 2023, we had 110,050. The revenue for '22 was a little bit higher, and that's because we spent a good deal of 2021 and 2022 pursuing delinquent payments. And so we were able to get those squared away over that period. So it's down to basically where it's been at for, you know, as far as revenue. We're still looking quite good on that. So if you have any questions for me, I'll.
I don't have any questions, but I'm looking at your plans and the agenda for the February planning board commission is right on. We need to get moving on that kind of stuff. And, you know, the thing that happened a few months ago with the battery is just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to so, energy, renewable, whatever shape, form that you want to think about it. It's here, and it's here to stay. And we need to be able to deal with it, one fashion or another. Whether we turn it down, accept it, whatever we do, we need to be ready to go.
Right.
So I applaud you for getting that on the agenda and moving ahead. Thank you.
Tim, I just had one question. You said that you were going to address wind. Is that wind only, or are we going to?
But we already have wind energy.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we're addressing, you know, the battery problems. I mean, that's never going to go away. I want to make sure the solar problem.
Right.
And everything is included in that so that we have a upfront knowledge of what's coming in that we can attack when the time comes.
Right, and that's considered the battery storage usually follows the alternative energy sources as well typically, you know. So if there's like wind or solar or whatever, then the battery, you know, or potential of that, then that's why we want to address. We're going to wrap all of that into this discussion.
Okay, and is that, now, you talked about you're also looking to replace one of the commissioners that passed.
Yes.
Are we still looking into a nine-commission board? Or have we discussed maybe not needing that many commissioners on that board?
I think we've discussed that.
Yeah, so this was addressed by Hannah at a prior commission meeting. So the commission, the planning and zoning commission does not need to be nine. It can be between five and nine per our current regulations. The difficulty is with having an even number, which is what we have currently. So that's kind of the long and short of that.
Mm-hmm. And I think we should also point out, if I'm not mistaken, is that there is rules for the makeup of the board. I mean, so many have to be out of the city of Salina. So many have to be within the city of Salina. And there's several different criteria to meet that that person has to meet. So you can't just say, oh, we need another one. So let's go get Larry from southwest Celine County. And maybe his position does not fit.
And the other thing that it helps to have nine members, the more members you have, the more likelihood you will have of a quorum. And also, it allows for better representation in those areas of the county that might not be represented.
Okay.
And Tim, a quick question here. You mentioned something about in 2022, the reason why that number was higher because you collected some delinquent funds.
Yes, there was some funds.
Do you have delinquent funds in '23 that is not being collected?
Not to my knowledge at this point. I think we've solved that. I think we're pursuing, you know, we're pretty aggressive about.
Okay, thank you.
So nothing at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tim. Okay. I see that we have an executive session on the agenda. Do you'd like to fill us in?
Well, we're still at number three here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay.
I'd be happy to fill you in on executive session. But first, county administrator update, just two quick items. So the first was legislative update. So today, the city of Salina and the Economic Development Partners, which of course includes the county, are making appearances at both the House and Senate Commerce Committees to discuss the housing project that Salina was awarded a couple of years ago and update them on that and so forth. So that's where Hannah is today. She went along as part of that delegation. The other big news that is, we think, happening today, we believe that today might be the day when the legislature attempts to override the governor's veto of the tax package. So it should be an eventful day in Topeka today. The second item that I had on for today is the Kansas County Commissioners Association Conference. So commissioners have not yet seen that. That has been announced for April 16th through 18th. This year, it is in Pittsburgh, which is a bit of a drive. And so since it starts on a Tuesday, that sort of begs the question of, you know, if commissioners plan to attend and drive time and whether we should have our Tuesday meeting. Fortunately, if there were commissioners who are interested in going to Pittsburgh, we do have a meeting on April 30th that was one of the canceled meetings. So we could just flip-flop, cancel the 16th, and meet on the 30th instead if there were interest. So just wanted to point that out. You all can look at your schedules and consider, and we can discuss again on future date.
One quick question, Philip. Also, I hear that the one, I think it's Senate Bill 4664, which is the banning of plastic bags and containers and taking away the home run rule from the cities, is up for vote?
Yeah, it's 2668 or something. Yes, I know it doesn't start with a four. But yes, there is current legislation that's actually continued from last session regarding what I call the ban ban. So it would prohibit cities and counties from banning plastic bags and a few other things. The KAC, the Kansas Association of Counties, has submitted testimony on that regarding not only the local control impact, but the solid waste impact as well. So I know that was something that you had had concerns about in the past. We have not been asked to weigh in with testimony from Celine County, but I know KAC is following that very closely, as is the League of Municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioner comments? Okay, do you see any announcements?
I just have one quick announcement. I know it's a little early, but not much. So for those that don't know, this year on March 19th, we are having a presidential preference primary, which we have not had one since 1992. So it's fairly new to Kansas. But voter registration deadline is February 20th. That is also the deadline to change your party. So if you don't want to be with the party you are now, you can switch, that deadline is that same time. And then that is also the deadline, which is a little bit different than normal elections, to ask for a ballot by mail. So you would have to send in your application by that time. So just wanted to give you a heads up, it's coming quickly.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, I'm sorry I jumped so far ahead earlier. Now, next on the agenda, we have an executive session.
Yes, sir. Staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the attorney-client privilege exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss potential litigation for 10, 15, 10 minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10:09.
Salute.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, I mean, all opposed, zero. So we are adjourned. Okay. Okay, we're done with the executive session. No action would be taken on the board up here, looking to next week to some of the agenda items, the appraisers' update, emergency management update, bid award, 2024 road materials, pipe culverts, and bridge decking, and the budget schedule. Anything else any of the commissioners would like to bring up?
We'll be adding senior center.
Senior center, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring it back to commission for an adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Then a motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. It passes four zero. We will see you next week.